Well, hi there and welcome to Exploring Music. This is Bill McLaughlin. Our theme-
Good evening, everybody. Today is June 1st, 2015, and this is the Moscow City Council meeting. Welcome all those that are here on a somewhat blustery evening this evening.
Art?
Yes, would everybody stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you, Art. Before we get into the next thing, I want to make an announcement. Heather Munson, who is a young lady that you guys see that always knocks on the door when we get ready to start our meetings, will be leaving us. This is her last council meeting tonight, and she'll be heading for new endeavors in Seattle. We all wish her very, very well. We hate to see her go. She's such a wonderful young lady that does a wonderful job for us. So Heather, back there, congratulations and good luck to you from all of us. With that, we'll move on to item number one, which would be approval of the May 18th minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve the minutes for May 18th.
I'll second that.
Okay, Dan made a motion to approve the minutes for May 18th with Jim Bowden second. I'll start the roll with Walter.
Hi.
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 Okay, we will move on to the next thing. Gary, you have a staff recognition report tonight?
None tonight, sir.
Sure. Okay, we'll move on to item number three, which is mayor's appointments. And it's my pleasure to, before the council, to recommend Amanda Argona for the Tree Commission with the expiration of 12/31/2015.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve Amanda's appointment to the-
I'll second that.
Okay, Dan made a motion to approve Amanda to the Tree Commission with Wayne Cross's second. I'll start the roll with John.
Hi.
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 Okay, Amanda, and I know you're out there. If you'd like to stand up, you could even come up and address us if you wish, because you're always such an enthusiastic young woman, so please come up and welcome.
Well, I'd just like to say thank you for the appointment, and I'm really looking forward to being on the Tree Commission and utilizing my degree from the University of Montana. That's about everything.
Let's give Amanda a round of applause. Thank you. We're always looking for good volunteers. We have a member of this wonderful community of ours, so thank you, Amanda, and welcome aboard. Okay, we'll move on to item number four, which is public comment and mayor's response period, which we allocate 15 minutes time for this, as long as it's something that's not before council tonight or not before the planning and zoning or board of adjustments. If you'd like to come up and state your name, address, you're welcome to do so right now. Well, with that, we're going to move on to item number five, which is Human Rights Commission report by Chief David Duke. Chief, you've got the floor, sir.
Honorable Mayor Lambert and city council members, thank you for giving us the opportunity to present the Human Rights Commission annual report at this time. I'd like to introduce our chair, Ken Fots, who has a presentation for you.
So, good evening, Mayor Lambert.
Good evening, Ken.
Council members, good to see you again. So, what, I can't believe it's been a year since we last did this. It's been a quick year, it seems like, so, when I was looking at it. So, I thought I would go through what we've done over the last year, some of the things, and then also talk about what we are in progress, having in progress, what we're working on right now. And so, last, over the last year, we held a social justice forum on renters' rights, which was very well-attended, some interesting things going on, and this was a hot-button issue because of the syringa issues going on outside of town, so a lot of community members were interested in this one. So, we talked about renters' rights and responsibilities from both sides, and so that went really well. We also held this event that was more entertainment, educational event, on gender and sexuality in music, basically. And so, it was looking at the whole history of music from blues and jazz up to contemporary and the LGBT community's involvement in all of that music. And so, that was very well-attended and received as well. We then held two social justice forums on race and racial issues, which we had titled Lessons from Ferguson: A Conversation on Race, because when we held the first one, Ferguson had, the first events had happened, and the second round of events had been going on, so we held this and what did it mean for us here. And so, we did a panel discussion, including Chief Duke, representing law enforcement on that. That was extremely well-attended. In fact, they, we, I think, broke fire codes in this room that day, because there were people in the hall. We had filled them up back here, everything else. It was a huge turnout. And so, many of the people wanted a second forum that would not be a panel, but would be a community discussion, so we held another one later, after the first of the year. This one, sadly, was not as well-attended. I mean, there were people there, and we had a wonderful discussion, but it was not as full. But, yeah, I suppose if it was as full, we would not have got as much done, because too many people would have wanted to say something, and we wouldn't have got anywhere. But, I would have liked a few more people at that one. But, we did come up with some interesting ideas that we're going to be exploring as part of this one. We also participated, again as usual, in the Martin Luther King Human Rights Breakfast. The Moscow Human Rights Commission is a sponsor of this, supporting the Leta Human Rights Task Force, that they do a wonderful job every year, putting this on, bringing in great speakers, and so, and we're very happy to help them support that and provide that support. So, those are the basic kind of things that we've done over this year, and we have some big things coming up. The first one, whoops, it's taking off without me, is it's time again for the Ismat and Manan Sheikh Community Unity Award, so we are gearing up for that. We have the 1912 Center booked for November 6th, 5th, I'm drawing a blank on the date now. But, the Human Rights Commission will be sending out the call for nominations for groups or individuals who participate in the community, bringing the community together, supporting diversity, inclusiveness, all of those types of things in the community. And then, we will look at the slate of nominations, and then we will make recommendations to send to Mayor Lambert, which then it's ultimately your decision, but we'll make some recommendations on that. And so, we'll be getting that rolling here, putting out the call for nominations soon, so that we can get that going. Now, another big thing that we're working on right now is our participation in the Northwest Coalition for Human Rights. The Moscow Human Rights Commission is extremely active in this, and we've talked, I've talked about this before. It's human rights groups and individuals working in human rights in five counties in northern Idaho and two counties in eastern Washington, and we all combine our efforts. It's mainly communication, so that we don't duplicate efforts, we can help each other and join together on projects, that sort of thing. And the big thing that we're working on and planning is defining the Center Human Rights Conference that will be held on October 17th, Saturday, October 17th, here at the University of Idaho Bruce Pittman Center, and the Human Rights Commission is central in this. It will have four tracks of workshops in the morning and in the afternoon. One track is for students interested in human rights, one is for educators, one is for human rights community activists, and the other is for law enforcement and public servants. And so, we're very happy about getting this off the ground again. Our last one was three years ago, is the last one that we've done, and so, we're happy that we can start getting this rolling again. And so, we've lined up some really good workshop leaders, some really good speakers, and we are also bringing in, as our keynote speaker for the dinner, James Meredith is going to be talking. James Meredith, if you're not familiar with him, was the first African-American student to go to the University of Mississippi when it was first integrated. He also disagreed with Martin Luther King, so decided to do his own march by himself, where he then was shot and ended up, ended up in the hospital, barely survived it. And so, he's, has a different angle on doing grassroots human rights activism, and so we thought it would be an interesting idea to bring him in. He's excited to come to Moscow. He's never been here before, and so he's looking forward to it. He'll be speaking up in Coeur d'Alene and doing some things up there as well. And so, we'll be spreading more word about this one, getting advertisements out. We hope to have at least 150 registrants coming, many of them students from the universities, several universities, and from the high school. But, not, the Human Rights Commission is kind of leading this conference, but so are several other groups, and the University of Idaho, WSU, Gonzaga, North Idaho College, Eastern Washington are all participating in it. And we're hoping to get Lewis and Clark in on it as well, so, but they haven't confirmed yet. So, it will be quite a few organizations contributing to it. Then, the last thing that we're going to be working on, and it's going to be kind of a long-range project, and this came up at our last Human Rights Commission meeting, well, we had guests that it came up slightly before that, about awareness of disability issues, because it was brought to our attention, and I don't know if any of you heard of this, John was, of course, at the meeting, but it was also in the daily news, that there had been several incidences of basically, well, to be kind, rude and obnoxious behavior towards people with disabilities, but you could be even harsher than that on some of the treatment, especially for the sight-impaired individuals, but there had been other incidents as well. So, what we've decided to do is do a whole program of bringing awareness to this issue and education of the issue. We're going to be working with the school districts, with the University of Idaho, with the Disability Action Center in town, many other groups as well. We're not quite sure how it's going to shape out yet, but it won't be just one event, it will be a series of them, because one is not going to do it, you know, just, you know, don't, you know, be aware, one time isn't going to do it. And so, we want to catch it a lot of different directions, a lot of different ways, because I myself have seen, saw an incident downtown on Main Street, where an elderly woman with a walker was slowly crossing the crosswalk, and I stopped to let her cross very slowly. And another car further back didn't like that. He was talking on his phone, he whipped around us, passed her in the crosswalk, and kept on going, and I was honking at him, trying to get him to stop, but he just kept going. And so, there, there seems to be a lot of just total ignorance, rudeness, and ignoring, and impatience with people with disabilities, and so I think we need to try to address that issue. And so, that's going to be, over the next year at least, a series of things that we're going to be working on and that we're fleshing out. And that's it in a nutshell.
Well, Ken, the Human Rights Commission is a very, very important commission in our area, in our region, and it's something, and it's great to have Chief Duke as a city liaison with our commission and this organization, and it's an ongoing, as you all know, it's an ongoing effort, and just like you just said this last statement, it never ends. It's a continuous thing, and it's about education, a lot of it as well, too, and getting people up to speed, you know, where they need to be. John, you sit on that commission as a council meeting.
Yeah, the, I make, I think I've made all the meetings, but I'm not sure.
I think you're there most of the time, yeah.
And one of the things I do have to say is that with the spectrum, the broad spectrum of people that are on the commission and the diversity that is on the commission, we get to hear things going on in Moscow that I normally wouldn't hear about. I appreciate that. Don't always agree, but I really appreciate it. And the group does good work, they talk about things, they flesh out things that needed to be talked about, and things that don't, they move along. Ken is a great chair, because he's got a one-hour limit.
I don't always make that, John.
And we always make, well, if it's more, it's only a couple of minutes more, so. Anyway, I really enjoy it. It's, I've been on it for two years, and I'll probably be on it next year.
You know what, I'll get with you in a second, Wayne. One of my favorite days is the Martin Luther King Breakfast. I really enjoy that. It's a, it's just fun event in our community, because of the diversity that we have and the very broad spectrum of folks that come to that. Ken, it's a wonderful attending thing, and always very, very full. Wayne?
Ken, how many years have you been chairing that commission? You look at, any idea?
I really don't know.
It's been a long time, because I think I was, one of my first liaison positions was like eight years ago, and you were-
Yeah, I-
Back when you had hair?
I joined, I joined the commission when it was almost a year old, and I became chair when it was about two years old, maybe, two and a half.
You're doing a great job, so thank you.
So, well, thank you. But, yeah, I don't remember. I've lost track, so.
And that shows you compassion, because you don't really care, because you're there and it's a job and it's a function you really enjoy doing, and so it's a big deal for us, Ken. Thank you. Other commissioners have any comments for Ken?
All right.
Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we will move on to item number six. We're going to have a public hearing on Prospect Place Edition, and we're going to have a PUD and a preliminary plat. Michael Ray is going to present, but before Mike starts, we're going to have one public hearing, but there's several issues in this one public hearing that we're going to have votes on. We're going to have a vote on the PUD, as well as a vote on the preliminary plat, so there's two functions, as well as voting on irrelevant criteria for both the PUD and the preliminary plat, so there'll be actual four votes that we're going to be talking about tonight. And with that, Mike, the podium is yours, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the council. So, before you tonight, we have a request for a planning and development and a preliminary plat for Prospect Place Edition. And so, just to flashback to get started, back in 1994, Dixon Hall developers had purchased a two-acre parcel, which was zoned multifamily residential, which was R4. Try to go back and find an image from '95, '94, but could only come up with the image from 2000 here, so this is what it first started as. You can see Palouse River Drive is the dark outline here on the south, and this would be the Sunnyside extension here to the east, so a two-acre parcel. And at the time, and the way it currently exists within our zoning code, you're able to put multiple structures on a single piece of property within the R3 and the R4 zones. And so, really, the issue comes down to dividing ownership, and so, you could, as long as it meets the minimum lot size for number of dwellings on a parcel, you could fill this with dwellings, and it could all remain under common ownership. Well, at the time, they divided, they decided to divide ownership through the condominium plat, and the original intent was to create a retirement community with one-story, single-family homes, divide it with a condominium plat, and that was instead of a subdivision plat, instead of going through that process, which was perfectly valid, legal at the time, and still is. Wanted to go through some of the differences between a condo plat and subdivision plat. First of all, condo owner owns really the airspace within a building with a condominium plat. They don't own the ground underneath. A condo association owns the ground underneath the building, as well as the area surrounding the building. This is called common area, typically within declarations. The Idaho Condominium Act allows detached condos or site condos, and this is what we have here in Prospect Place. Typically, you envision a condominium as a large contiguous building with multi-levels, and each unit is a condominium. Well, this is a site condo, like in Prospect Place. And the city of Moscow does not get involved in the condominium plat process or recognize condo lots, and so, we had just, as soon as each building permit goes through, to build a house within Prospect Place, we just checked the setbacks and the lot size and the lot width compared to the underlying zoning district, and we just look at it as one individual parcel. They had gone through the condominium plat process, and the city actually doesn't have a process for that, they just record the condo plat up at the county. Condominium Association is in charge of the declarations document, which is the crux of kind of the condo plat. Within a subdivision plat, subdivision plats convey real property, so you're owning the ground as well as the structure on top of the ground, the property. Some have homeowners associations, which adopt CCNRs. These are similar to condominium associations, control kind of those common areas, maybe they're private streets, maybe there's lawn mowing that goes on. Those would be handled through homeowners associations, which some subdivisions have, some don't. And back then, condominium plats were a common way of dividing ownership on property. These are, like I mentioned before, multi-unit condominium buildings or duplexes. You see a lot of duplexes in town where they constructed that, and before, we had twin homes. Really, the issue was dividing ownership on that, that piece of property. Maybe the owner was going to live in one side and run out the other side, so it was all one owner. Well, if you wanted to sell both sides and have multiple owners, really, the only way to do that was through a condominium plat, and so you'd just have one side be a condo and the other side would be a condo, and then the area around the duplex would be the, the common area. That was before the enactment of our twin home ordinance, where you don't have to do that now. Each can be a single-family dwelling. So, it all kind of came to a close in 2008, when site condominiums started to become challenging when the Great Recession hit, and either to get financed or refinanced, because we had a high rate of defaulted loans, specifically on condominiums. And so, there was a real challenge with getting those financed. So, this brings us to today, and currently, you have nine dwellings that are currently constructed within Prospect Place. You can see the lot lines on there. Those are actually condominium lots, so there's recognizing, limited common area for each condominium unit, which is defined within the declarations document. So, there's 12 lots shown on here, there's two of them vacant, and since the photo was taken in 2012, there's actually been another dwelling constructed on this northerly lot there. There is one off-street parking parcel, which is held under common ownership of the condominium association. They also have a couple of, or actually, three private streets, which serve the development off of Sunnyside Avenue. Palouse River Drive there is to the south, and you also have Anderson Frontier Additions, which really surround the parcel. ITD's Service Yard there is to the south, and you also have various trailer courts to the south side of Palouse River Drive. Anderson Frontier Park is directly to the west of this property. So, the proposal before you tonight is a preliminary plat, and that's in order to create 12 subdivision lots, and there are 11 parcels, which range from about 4,000 square feet in size to anywhere between 10,000 square feet in size, and there's that one off-street parking parcel, and that's about 1,200 square feet in size. The plan unit development for you tonight would create 11 single-family dwelling parcels, and those dwellings are proposed to range from about 1,500 square feet in size to 2,400 square feet in size. Applicants submitted elevations of the nine single-family dwellings, pictures that have, those are the ones that have already been constructed within the development, and then they also have three conceptual images of buildings that will be constructed, or the typical theme of the PUD. So, the theme is single-story, single-family dwellings. Some of them have daylight basements. These are primarily the ones located on the west side. There's quite a bit of slope change between Anderson Frontier Park and this property. They vary in architectural style and building materials. Really, they have similar massing. The garage is usually a little bit closer to the street. Some have gabled roofs, some have hip roof. It's really a wide variety. Lots are accessed via three private streets. This is an example of the topography of the property and the surrounding area. It's generally about 7% to 11% grade. Land use designation is currently designated as neighborhood conservation. Auto-urban residential swathed directly to the north. You also have an urban residential across Palouse River Drive to the south there, and you have parks and open space with Anderson Frontier Park, as well as the city park property on Palouse River Drive to the southwest. The rest of Anderson Edition and Frontier Edition is neighborhood conservation. What neighborhood conservation means is intended to preserve the character of many of the city's existing residential neighborhoods. Neighborhood-specific zoning districts, which would be a PUD, would be established that would describe prevailing lot sizes, permitted uses, and still allow for improvement and expansion of the neighborhood. Brings us to our zoning of the area. Like I mentioned before, it's multifamily residential, which is our R4 zone. We have a swath of R3, which is medium-density residential directly to the north, as well as another R3 swath directly to the west of Anderson Frontier Park. To the south, we have Motor Business Zone on the south side of Palouse River Drive, and then the Anderson Frontier Edition to the north is all R1, which is single-family residential. R4 is intended to provide for the most intense residential land uses in the community. It's to be applied where activity levels are high and adequate public facilities are available, especially near the University of Idaho or the Central Business District, as well as adequate transportation access should be given high priority in determining the appropriate location for R4 zoning districts. Palouse River Drive happens to be a minor arterial. Closer aerial view, really what I described before, the nine single-family dwellings currently constructed. You can see the off-street parking parcel, a little bit more clearly defined there. Currently have those two vacant lots there to the southeast corner. Brings us to the preliminary plat that was submitted by the applicant. You can see the, pretty much the same configuration as the current condo configurations. There may have been a slight adjustment to meet building codes with the lot lines, but really, the same configuration. You have a couple city easements that go through the property. There's a 20-foot waterline easement that transacts the property north-south here, and on the west side, you also have a sanitary sewer and storm sewer easement with mains currently within that easement that serve the property. So, the proposed dwellings, once again, 1,500 square feet to 2,400 square feet in size. Really, the set packs vary depending upon the lot, but typically, they range between 10 to 13 feet for rear yards, 3 to 7 feet for side yards, 15 to 25 for front yards. And the PUD base density, when looking at that for the R4 zone, is 24 dwelling units per acre, and so we're coming in quite a bit less than that, at about 6.6 dwelling units per acre with a two-acre parcel, so no density bonuses were required as part of this proposal. These were the elevation images that were submitted on behalf of the applicant. Once again, the, quite a range of architectural style. You have some gabled, some hip roofs. Majority of them have garages that are two-car, and they are a little bit closer to the street, but there's really no common theme, except for just single-story, maybe daylight basement. These are the conceptual images that were submitted, pretty similar to the current plans that were built out there, as well as sample floor plans, all one level. So, we'll continue to include the extension of those three private streets. They're named Garnet Court, Pearl Circle, and Ruby Court. They have 25-foot right-of-ways, and with 20 feet of that 25 feet is a paved street, which also includes rolled curbs on both sides of the street. Sunnyside Avenue is designated as a local neighborhood street, and Palouse River Drive is a minor arterial. Like I mentioned before, we have those water mains and those utility easements. We have a 6-inch city main within the 20-foot utility easement going through the middle of the property, and private lines connect to the, each individual service to these mains. Then just have a water quote about the expected usage when the development's at full build-out. We're looking at about 1 million gallons of water per year with 11 dwelling units, assuming it's 2.25 occupants. Again, we have 8-inch sanitary and storm within the 10-foot utility easements. We also have stormwater catch basins already installed in Ruby and Garnet Court, which convey the storm water to the mains on the west side. And once again, we have those private sanitary sewer lines, which connect the services to the mains. Looking at the parkland dedication, there should be a memo included in your packet tonight from our Parks and Rec Director, Dwight Curtis. He stated that the proposed plat is located within the Anderson First Edition subdivision, which has already dedicated parkland to the city of Moscow, actually Anderson Frontier Park adjacent to the west. Planning and zoning commission did conduct a public hearing, and that happened on April 22nd, 2015, and recommended approval of the proposed PUD and preliminary plat to city council with no conditions. And it's staff's recommendation tonight to conduct a public hearing upon the proposed PUD and preliminary subdivision plat, and upon consideration of any testimony presented, approve the PUD and preliminary plat for Prospect Place Edition with no conditions suggested. Certainly be able to answer any questions that you might-
Mike, you talked about three private streets, and I'm suspecting the applicant will address these as well. And those public streets will be streets that the condominium association will be taking care of for snow removal and those types of things, rather than city?
Correct. Yeah, they'll be private streets, and so that'll be the responsibility of the, it'll be homeowners association if they, yeah, were to be granted approval for the subdivision plat and PUD.
Dan, had a question?
That was my question.
Oh, okay. Other questions for Mike before I open it up?
Art? Just wondering about how the land is to be conveyed to the individual owners. Does the condo association just essentially deed over the chunk of property upon which- Does the condo association just essentially deed over the chunk of property upon which the houses sit and then sell the other land on the undeveloped lots later? How is that part managed?
Maybe a better question for the applicant's attorney.
We can, Art, we're gonna be, when we get into the testimony, the applicant will be the first, and the person can address that issue at that time. How's that sound?
Works for me.
Other questions for Mike? Thank you, Mike. With that, I am going to open the public hearing at 7:30. I would love to hear from the applicant, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. Susan Wilson, 208 South Main Street here in Moscow, and I represent the Prospect Place Neighborhood Condominium Association. Thank you, Mike. He's always done a great job, so I really don't have to add much. There are a couple of things I wanted to say, and then I can answer Art's question. First, this conversion is basically an ownership. It's going from a condominium ownership to a fee simple ownership. Physically, the characteristics of the neighborhood are not going to change, and as Mike said, the change in ownership is basically predicated upon making the properties more marketable and more financeable. To be clear, though, typical condominium associations are set up the way that Mike described, in that you have the building, which is usually defined as the unit, and then the area around the building, like the yard and et cetera, are usually limited common areas that are owned by the association. This declaration is atypical of a normal condominium declaration because it defined unit as not just the building, but also the property around the building within the actual lot of the condominium, which means that nothing is changing from the owner's perspective. They're still getting, and this PUD reinforces exactly what they already consider as their own individual properties. In other words, the association doesn't have any ownership per se in their actual lot itself. It owns the lot, it would be Lot 7 where the parking lot would be, and then the private streets. So, when it comes to the question about the conveyance of the properties, each one of those lots are described as a unit, and that unit is owned by, obviously, the individual owner. So, what's going to happen is we have a master agreement. My second point was that all of the owners had to agree to this conversion before it could happen. So, when we get to the point where we have an acceptable PUD and a final plat, we're going to be doing cross, basically quitclaim deeds where we transfer ownership as a unit in a condominium to fee simple lot numbers based upon the accepted PUD. Unfortunately, this is not the end of the process for them because there are some lenders involved, which means that, you know, before we can get on to getting approval and consent from the lenders to convert from a condo to a fee simple ownership, which is going to require them to reconvey deeds of trust, get new deeds of trust, because we're talking about a whole different legal description, we have to go through that process before we can actually record the PUD once you guys have approved it. So, it's been over a year, and they're very anxious and excited to get the project finalized. But having said that, like I said, Mike pretty much covered everything. You know, Kurt Obermeyer and the Planning and Zoning Commission said if slam dunk was in the dictionary, this would be it, and I, hopefully you guys will agree with them in that. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, and Scott Becker is a surveyor who prepared the plat, and he's here this evening, and he can also answer any questions you might have.
Art, did that answer your question?
It did, but I've got another one.
Okay, well, fire away.
I was just wondering, this is more for my own curiosity than anything pertaining to the PUD as such, but does this have any tax implications?
It shouldn't, because they're still being taxed. You know, each property owner is still taxed on the actual unit, and the association is still, you know, gonna have the responsibility for Lot 7, which is the parking lot.
So, essentially, it's just a wash. Okay.
Walter?
Just to have you say it one more time. The condo association will dissolve or go away. A homeowners association will be created, and the homeowner association will own the parking lot and the streets.
Yes.
And be responsible for maintenance of both.
Yes.
Go ahead, Walter.
A follow-up through the, in that regard to either Bill or Mike. Does the city have an agreement with people who hold private streets in Moscow? Do we have anything that ties private streets to our interest, or we don't have to? What's the?
There is no agreement between the city and any private streets development or association. We approve the connections to the city street through the development process, and that's the extent of any agreement.
Okay, so, what they're proposing to do here is among themselves.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Other questions for Susan? Okay, thanks.
Are there covenants on the undeveloped lots?
There are covenants on the whole, on the whole project, yes.
But they were part of the Condominium Association, and they'll transfer?
They are.
Unchanged to the homeowners association?
Well, I'm not gonna say unchanged because all the owners got together and are revising the covenants at the same time that we're doing this process. So, when the PUD gets approved and we get consent, then at the same time of the recording of the PUD and the new legal descriptions, we'll have a recording of, basically a restatement of covenants and the creation of the separate homeowners association for the streets and the parking lot.
Okay, thank you, Sue.
You're welcome.
We may call you back up, but we'll move on.
Thank you.
I would take testimony in favor of this. Please come up, state your name, and we will allow you three minutes. Seeing no one rush, I would take general testimony or opposition to this. Please step forward, state your name. This is making it easy on us, folks. No one rushing, so I am going to close the public hearing at 7:36 and turn it over to council. John, you were liaison to planning and zoning when this was brought forward on the 22nd of April?
Yeah, planning and zoning with the help of Mike Ray looked at this thoroughly and came to the conclusion that, as was stated, that there's not going to be really any changes other than the availability of the people that own the individual houses and the property around them to either refinance or to sell. And with the economic situation being what it was and what it still is today, what we're be proposing, what is being proposed is just basically to help these people out so that they can have a little bit more control on the financing, sale, refinancing of the property that they bought. And the planning and zoning is totally in favor of it, and the city staff is in favor of it, and as a member of the council, I'm fully in favor of it.
Okay, I just want to remind the council that we're gonna, there's two things that we're gonna vote on. The PUD, which is the planned unit development for anybody out there that doesn't understand what that is, and then the second, the preliminary plat. We'll also have to vote on the relevant criteria for each one of those. So, as we go along, we should take the PUD first because that is what staff has set us up for. So, Dan?
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion that we approve this planned unit development.
I second that. Okay, I got a motion by Dan and a second by Wayne to approve the PUD as it is brought forward to us. Correct?
Yep.
Further discussion before I call roll?
I'd just like to say that I think it makes for a nice cleanup of some rather difficult circumstances, and the owners have my sympathies as they wade into real estate law and try to patch things back together, but I think this does a good job of cleaning up some deficiencies.
Okay, with that, I'll start to roll with you, Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay, 6 to 0. So, we talk and discuss the relevant criteria for the PUD.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion that we accept the reasoned statement of relevant criteria and standards. I believe they were adopted on May 4th. I know they're signed on May 14th by the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay.
I second that.
Okay, Dan made a motion, a second by Art, to accept the relevant criteria standards that were accepted May the, what'd you say, May 14th?
May 14th.
By the planning and zoning. I will start to roll with John.
Aye.
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 Okay, we'll move on to that. So, the PUD is passed with its relevant criteria. Now, we need to talk about the preliminary plat.
I'll let someone else do the move. I've been doing all the heavy lifting here today.
Who wants to take a?
Heavy lifting, are ya?
Yeah, I'll lift it. I'd make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for the Prospect Place Addition with no conditions.
Second.
Okay, we have got a motion by Art, a second by Jim Boland, to approve the preliminary plat for Prospect Place Addition with no conditions. Any discussions before we move forward? Start to roll with you again, Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay, the preliminary plat has moved forward. Now, we'll talk about the relevant criteria standards for the preliminary plat.
Everybody's looking at you, Art. I know, but I don't have the date right in front of me.
I have just the 14th.
No, I would move acceptance of the relevant standards and criteria adopted by planning and zoning and signed on May 14th for the Prospect Place preliminary plat.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Art, a second by John Weber, to approve the preliminary, or the relevant criteria standards for the preliminary plat for Prospect Place Addition with no conditions. I will start to roll with John.
Aye.
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 And I.
And that is done, so it's over with, and we will move on to the next thing. Congratulations. I, one thing I like is I like density, and I think this is an absolute terrific job for our area and a residential area. I think this is terrific because I think we need more of this type of development within our community. So, with that, we will move on to item number seven. Thank you, folks. Public art plan presentation by Kathleen Burns and Becky Couch. And I know we got two other folks out there, Iris and Robin, who will, if they would like, we sure like to hear from them as well, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kill my husband when I get in.
Well, good. Don't kill your husband, man. We wanna. Yep.
Not often would make everybody happy.
That's right, she was. Pretty good.
Way to scare her from your life. Okay, we ready?
Sure. Iris, would you and Robin like to sit up in the front row with Becky? Here, too, might be easier for you in case you want to get up to the podium and speak as well.
Okay. Can everybody see? Okay. So, this is a PowerPoint about the public art master plan. In your packets, you have the full plan, so we're just gonna go why public art is important for Moscow. You have some great scenes of downtown there. A city enriched with public art and one that offers cultural amenities is a city that attracts business. The cultural ambience of a place is what draws people to a place where they would not otherwise go. Public art can be a highly cost-effective way to drive economic revitalization. 43,000 people surveyed from 26 cities ranked social offerings higher than education, safety, and local economy as a driver of attachment to a place. So, we've done a couple workshops on placemaking, and this goes back to placemaking and social offerings. Public art contributes positively to a community's social offerings. Why public art is important for Moscow. Does everybody recognize those images so you know where you are? Okay. Public art has the power to energize public spaces, promote community engagement, and transform everyday places into attractive and meaningful environments. Public art is part of a community's history. It reflects and reveals our society and adds meaning to our city. Public art is intended to attract attention, and in doing so, provides aesthetic beauty, cultural interpretation, education, inspiration, and general improvement to the urban environment. So, let me go back here. To the left is the Wildflowers, and that's off of Steiner near the park. That's a bus shelter. The vinyl art is on the corner across from Walgreens on Main. And is that D or C Street? Yeah. And then to the right is Harold Blaise, and that's our mural on the pool. Why a public art master plan? Robin Oldgrom is here, our Chair of the Arts Commission. This has been a goal of the commission for quite a few years. Remember, the 1% ordinance was passed in 2004. The public art guidelines was passed in 2012, and we're finally getting to the public art master plan. We formed a public art subcommittee of the Moscow Arts Commission, and that was chaired by Iris Mays, who is also here. We establish goals and objectives and articulate a 10-year community vision for public art within the city of Moscow. Serve to educate the community about the benefits and importance of public art. Document existing public art collection and serve as a guide for organizing and prioritizing future public art installations. So, it's kind of like a roadmap. Identify capital and operational funding needs for a long-term, sustainable public art program. So, some of the contents of the plan, which by the way, was organized by Becky Couch, who's in the audience, too. So, this plan was done in-house. This was not done by a consultant. This was done within community planning and development. So, some of the contents of the plan. Introduction, define public art, types of public art, purpose of the plan, community context, the history, our existing public art collection, vision, goals, and objectives, public input process, recommended public art projects, and a lot of appendixes. So, the process, this is where the MAC did all the legwork. We developed questions for our citizen survey. We did a 2010 question, which was a preference for placement of public art in the community. What ranked high was the library, municipal buildings, city parks and trails, public walkways. In 2012, we asked the question, the preferred types of public art. This came back with murals, fountains, sculptures, functional art, architecture, performance art, land art, monuments, banners, and posters. We held the cultural cafes. I think, Walter, you attended a cultural cafe in this room.
Mm-hmm.
We did a design thinking and placemaking workshop, and that was in April 2012. Attended the farmer's market as the MAC in October and November, asking citizens what they thought of public art, and then had a cultural cafe in the Bloom Restaurant in January 2013. And these are sample photographs of the cultural cafe in this room. We also did another public input process with the opening of Linda Paul's photographic exhibit with the farmer's market, and that was March 5th, 2015. We had 20 to 30 attendees, and we sought input on the general plan, contents, draft goals and objectives, locations, and the public preferred for installation of public art. Attendees placed stickers on boards indicating their top three priority locations, and these are your maps. And this is potential public art locations and dots where people gave us their input. I think Jim Boland gave us a couple stickers that night. So, some of the goals and objectives. You have the transit center there with the sculptural pads on the left. You have another vinyl art, and that's Julian Ewart. And then you have the bike rack in East City Park, and that's Nathaniel Ely. So, upon review of public input, four major goals for public art in Moscow were developed. Each goal includes objectives intended to outline specific actions that will assist in achieving the goal. Goal one, increase public awareness and appreciation of public art and placemaking and the contribution of public art to the social, cultural, and economic well-being of the city. Objective one of one, develop a digital and print public art collection pamphlet for the purpose of guiding art tours and documenting public art installations to increase resident and visitor awareness and enjoyment of public artworks in Moscow. and visitor awareness and enjoyment of public artworks in Moscow. One two would be to continue the arts events such as Art Walk to increase art and artist exposure, awareness, and appreciation. And that brings me to Art Walk is next Friday, June twelfth, and you'll have four new sculptures. We vetted the sculptures. Iris was in the jury last week with the submissions, and those sculptures are going to be installed between eight and nine on Thursday. Another objective three, collaborate with the Chamber of Commerce to promote public art viewing opportunities within visitor information guides and materials. Expand opportunities for public involvement in all the arts. Goal number two, increase number of public art installations within the city. Establish a public art program to guide and cultivate at least one significant public art installation every two years. Number two is establish a public mural program. We get a lot of requests from businesses downtown wanting to do a mural installation. We have yet to draft that. Identify suitable mural installation locations, establish public mural standards, and pursue mural installations within Moscow. Number three, collaborate with community partners to initiate and coordinate public art projects. Identified community partners include but are not limited to the University of Idaho. And again, the Transit Center is a really good example of that. The installations that are going in on Thursday, three out of four are U of I students. The Chamber of Commerce, Heart of the Arts, local schools and businesses, and other similar organizations. Number four, develop policy for partnering with private developers to encourage public art installations within new and existing developments. Goal number three, increase funding for installation and care of public art within the city. Increase the public art ordinance contribution amount from one percent to one point twenty-five to provide additional funding to increase the number of new public art installations. Establish within the city's annual budget a public art program appropriation, starting at fifteen thousand, to provide a consistent and reliable funding source for public art installations, duration, and program administration. Currently, the way the one percent is set up is when there is a capital project that the one percent adheres to, money is collected. Our finance director, Don Palmer, administers the money. But as you can see, most of the public art was with the pool, the HERC, the new fire station. So most of the money was generated with new construction of new buildings. Partner with the Moscow Urban Renewal Agency to increase the current public art tax increment revenue allocation from one percent to two percent to accelerate public art installations within the urban renewal district in Moscow. Goal number four, increase integrated art projects that are fully incorporated into the design of a larger project. Develop a formal public art component review process for all city projects, subject to the public art ordinance, including a defined review period to allow for the identification of public art integration opportunities without excessive project delays. Port two, conduct training for city project planners, designers, managers, and other relevant staff to increase awareness of public art integration opportunities within city projects. So some of the recommended public art projects. Based on public input, again, the cultural cafes, your citizen surveys, the open house. Established goals and objectives for focus areas were identified where public art installations are desirable to the community. Downtown and Legacy Crossing, city entrances, and this relates to the entryway beautification project. City parks and pathways, city and public facilities. Downtown and Legacy Crossing, the Downtown Streetscape project, functional public art replacement and/or installation. The potential is there for fourteen benches, thirty trash receptacles, twenty-four planters, and twelve sculptural plints to host rotating artworks. Jackson and Sixth, integrated or sculptural southwest corner of the intersection, city entrances, the North City Entry, installation of medium-sized sculpture at the North Couplet near the intersection of Main and Sea. South, artistic enhancements to existing bridge and pedestrian guardrails along the US ninety-five at the crossing of the South Fork of the Palouse River. Parks and Pathways, Berman Creek Side, great location. We have the bus shelter with some wild flowers on the bus shelter, but great place for an installation along the pathway. East City Park, installation of a medium-sized integrated or functional art piece at a location within East City Park. Paradise Path, possibly an interpretive or functional art piece along the path. Friendship Square, installation of a medium-sized interpretive or functional art piece. City and Public Facilities, the Public Library was rated very highly to do an installation. Also, the nineteen twelve center. Based on public input, received, the projects were prioritized for anticipated installation within the next ten years, two thousand and seventeenth to two oh twenty-six, as follows. The North City Entry, Couplet at Main and Sea, Downtown Streetscape, your benches, your trash receptacles, planters, plints. Jackson and Sixth, the southwest corner, the URA, South Entry, ninety-five crossing at South Fork of Palouse River Drive. The Moscow Public Library, Berman Creek Side, East City Park, nineteen twelve, Paradise Path, and Friendship Square. So what's also recommended is a capital improvement plan. A ten-year public art capital improvement plan is included in the council packet. Plan provides a potential funding plan for a top ten priority public art projects with no financial actions being suggested until fiscal year two thousand and seventeen. The capital improvement plan provides a roadmap for achieving the goals, objectives, and recommendations for public art in Moscow as outlined in the public art master plan. So this is a pretty big Excel spreadsheet, but you have it in your packet as well. With that, we'll take comments or questions.
Kathleen, of course, the Arts Commission to me is another very important commission in our city, and it's actually, for me, it's one of the fun commissions with the things that they do, and the creativity that comes within that commission is terrific. And I'd like to see if Robin or Iris, or both of them, if they'd like to make any comment. You're sure welcome to come up, because this council appreciates fine art.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for letting us come and present this today. I'm going to repeat what I said in Admin a couple weeks ago, or last week. We are really looking forward to doing public art, getting back to doing public art. We are one of the most creative, fun commissions, I think, in the city. But this has taken up a lot of time. It's an important plan to have in place, but it's a living document. So what we're seeing tonight is kind of a snapshot of where we are and the information we've gathered. We're not going to stop here. We're going to keep gathering information, because our community's needs and emphasis is going to change. I really want to thank the Planning Department, Bill and Rebecca, for helping us. The goal is that when new projects and new plans come on board, that the Arts Commission is part of the process. We've got money. And we take it seriously, this one percent that we get. We take it very seriously. The Public Art Committee is one of seven or eight committees that we have. It's one of twelve or fifteen projects that we have going on. But this is a really important one, and we take it very seriously. So I think we also need to recognize the ripple effect of what MAC does and what the Public Arts Commission does. I don't know if you've noticed, the mural that's going on the side of the co-op. Iris just told me that Luna Whitmore is doing a vinyl wrap on one of their electrical boxes. And Gritman's new sculpture is quite beautiful. Businesses are investing their own money in art because they see that it adds to the aesthetics and the part of our community. So I think we set a tone in the community, and I really appreciate all of your support. Any questions?
Iris. What are the four sculptures that are going in before Art Walk? What are the locations on those?
Those are all going to be at the Transit Center. That's at the Sculpture Garden, next to the Transit Center. We've got seven plints there. We've got five plints there. And so we try at Art Walk to put some new sculptures in there. We partner with the Art and Architecture Department at the University of Idaho. It's a great opportunity. Public art is a big, it's big money for artists, and it's not something you can enter in very easily. So this is an opportunity for students to get, emerging artists to get public art installed. We do a couple of things with the Transit Center. We do the broadsides on the buses. I assume the council knows that we now have a poet laureate? Do they know that?
I don't.
We'll save that announcement for later.
You had, well, you had mentioned that, Kathleen, in that presentation.
I think we still have a contract that's being negotiated in legal. So we do a couple of things to sort of launch Art Walk at the Transit Center. So the sculptures will be installed and unveiled by, will they be installed and unveiled by Art Walk? Yeah, okay, good. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just wanted to know if there would be any downtown, or if they would all be at the Transit Center.
Those are the Transit Center. Public art is really expensive. I mean, big installations are expensive. So we've got a couple of, as you see, we've got a couple of places where we want to put some pieces, and we've got some money stowed away. And, you know, we can do small projects, the bike racks, the vinyl wraps on the utility boxes. But when it comes to the big pieces that are thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars, we need to take time and make sure that we're thinking carefully and that we put out a good proposal. So, yeah, we're really looking forward to getting back to that.
Thank you.
Iris?
Hi, Iris.
Hi. I just had a couple comments to make, because I feel, you know, very invested in this plan, and to give the Public Art Committee and the Arts Commission direction so that we can, you know, be good citizens and volunteers for you guys. So one of the things I think that's important, there's a couple things I just wanted to mention, and that is that the Arts Commission and this work helps the university and nonprofits and artists, and a lot of sectors of the community kind of come together, especially like you can see at Art Walk, you know, where we have, you know, sixty to eighty businesses and artists participating. So that's important. And then I heard a quote at a, you know, I'm in the College of Ag for my day job, and we had this guest speaker, and she said, "It's not what you say to people, it's how you make them feel that they will remember." And I think that art in the community has that effect. When people come to visit for, you know, a lot of our events, or, you know, when people graduate and they go on, when they come back, they remember, you know, the trails, or, you know, the experiences that they had, football, or, you know, the public art that's around the community. So I think it's important, as, you know, and right now, it's part of our city motto, Heart of the Arts, and so that's important to me. So I just wanted to share those thoughts, and I hope that, you know, however this proceeds, that you will be approving of the public art plan.
Thank you, Iris. You know, Robin had made a statement about, you know, it's a never-ending process, and you just keep chipping away. And that's the significance and importance of your guys' commission, because we all know, funding is tough to come by, and so that's why you've got to just keep pounding away year after year. And you guys do a great job with what you have to work with. And I think that's not only recognized by everybody, but very much appreciated by the efforts and the work that the commission does. Kathleen, the Art Walk is June twelfth.
Week from Friday.
What time is that, Art Walk?
Five.
Five P.M. And one of the tough things is I will be coming back, as will some of these counselors sitting up at the DIAS here with me, that, by the IC meetings in Boise, will be coming back that evening, so we'll probably get here too late to attend it. But it's something, the last two years I've had meetings where I have not been able to attend it, and it's one of the things I look forward to being able to do, and I haven't been able to do it yet for several years, so.
It's a long time.
Walter. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to commend Kathleen and the Arts Commission for a master plan that does not have attached to it a five-figure consultant contract.
They're the consultant.
Gary can correct me, but this may be a first. Just there. I do have a question, however.
Well, wait a minute, let's go back.
Uh-oh.
This was Bill's idea. And this was a very good idea, and then Bill supervised Becky, and so there was a lot of teamwork here. So it was really well done.
Again, to be able to have a master plan without a five-figure contract.
Which is why we didn't have to hire any outside consultants.
Dan, you're liaison to the Arts Commission. Would you like to speak?
When it comes back, I've got a question for Kathleen. Go ahead.
Well, I, you know, I missed a couple of the last few where this has come up due to some teenage angst.
Yours or some?
Not on my part, but, you know, I happen to have a teenager, so that's kind of how things happen. But anyway, you know, as we said in the Admin Committee as well, also, it's good to have a place to at least, you know, have, as Robin said, this is a snapshot of what's going on now, what could happen, you know? And, you know, one of my questions was, are we going to propose this in sixteen? They're talking about, probably this will come forward as a proposal with Kathleen's in the seventeen budget. So we'll hopefully see how things play out. And, you know, we had some other things we talked about in the commission that, you know, hopefully I put a bug in the ear of them as far as other ways of getting that funding, or even installations in a quicker manner. But, you know, we'll see how things work out. It's just a matter of getting the Arts Commission tied into, as Robin said, that, front-load that in there in the first part of new construction and stuff, so we can kind of hopefully make things happen quicker.
Walter, you have another question?
Thank you, Mayor. Kathleen, in the cultural cafes section, it refers to a map, four-point-one, that's entitled Preferred Locations for Public Art. And when I look at that, I see an area up on Highway ninety-five at what appears to be above Pentel Lane at the city limits. When I go on through, there's what appears to be a snapshot of one of the, of a board that repeats that location at apparently one of the meetings. But at some point, it appears to morph into Sea and Main.
Well, that kind of goes with the entryway beautification project.
I, okay, if that's the answer, is that how or why it was moved? Not that I have a problem.
It wasn't moved.
Not that I have a problem. Well, the preferred from the public meetings appeared to be up at the North City Limits, and now it's moved to Sea and Main. I don't have a particular problem with it. I'm just trying to understand the dynamic.
Okay. I think when you look at this project prioritization, some of this is like the ease of a project, what could be accomplished. I think as Robin references, as an organic document, this is not all set in stone, whatever project is going to come forward.
I understand that. I was just a little puzzled about what appeared to be the, Becky has the answer, I think.
So the four-point-one map.
Does the question make any sense?
Yes.
Okay.
It does. The four-point-one map came from the cultural cafe, and at the cultural cafes, there were several dots all over a map. And what we did when we created that four-point-one map was kind of compile where were there heavy areas of dots. And so that was kind of a representation of where a lot of dots were. Maybe they weren't exactly at that spot, but... And what we did when we created that four-point-one map was kind of compile where were there heavy areas of dots. And so that was kind of a representation of where a lot of dots were. Maybe they weren't exactly at that spot, but that's kind of where we, we created larger dots to represent those smaller dots everywhere. Then when we had the public open house in March, we had very specific locations mapped on, on a map, asking people to prioritize, give us their priorities. Yeah. And one of those was that Main and C and then also the north entry was on that map. And majority of people selected, a large number of people selected that north couplet at Main and C.
Okay. And like I said, I don't have a particular problem with it, I'm just trying to understand the movement.
Mr. Mayor.
John.
According to the, we, the agenda, we are supposed to receive the public art master plan or take other, other such actions deemed appropriate. That does not mean that we accept the plan, does it?
Well, if we, if we received the plan and we accepted, yeah, we've accepted.
No, what I'm saying is, are we saying that they're going to do everything that they say in this plan? Because if that's the case, I have some questions, I have some issues.
Okay, well, hang on a second John, I'm gonna have Gary read in here.
It's similar to the plans that have been adopted, the Water and Sewer Comprehensive Plan, Sanitation Comprehensive Plan, Parks and Rec Master Plan. These are, were created as a guidance for those departments and those, those project areas. Council typically accepts them, uses them as a roadmap. If you're asking whether by accepting this tonight that you are stating that the Public Arts Ordinance will increase from one percent to one point two-five percent, that these particular projects will move forward at a certain rate, still subject to your discretion as setting the budget and setting the work plans for the department. So it's, it's the, it's the plan put forward for your acceptance, review, and to utilize as you're, as you're setting your policies. So no, you're not saying that everything in here is going to be done along the timeframes that is being suggested.
Or anything.
Yeah, it'll be weighed against other city priorities. I remember there was a question when the sewer plant or sewer comprehensive plan came in, or water, I can't remember which. And the discussion was by, by accepting this, are we saying we will do all of these eighty-nine million dollars worth of projects?
That was the water.
Yeah, and it was, the answer was, no, we will, priorities will change, it's a roadmap and hopefully you, you'll utilize it as you're developing your policies as you go along. But this is what the state of the, of the department is, the state of the plan and how you want to move forward.
Mr. Mayor.
Hang on a second. John, does that suffice your question? Okay, I'll go to Wayne first and I'll come back to you Walter.
Well, I think one of the things that, John, you're concerned about is by accepting this plan that it's all, that boom, that's what it is and everything just starts to happen without any council input. As Gary has indicated, I don't believe that that's the case at all. Everything is incremental. This is, as Gary said, is a roadmap that they've put forward, which I think is a good roadmap with all things being positive, but as we go along, we'll see how that happens. Now, I do have a question however. And that has to do with the increase in the funding from, well, with the, first of all, with the public, public projects going from one to one point two, one, from one percent to one point two-five percent. And then with the Urban Renewal District, from one percent to two percent. So I guess my question is, why two percent for urban renewal and one point two-five for standard public projects?
Want me to answer that? Okay. So one point two-five, currently we don't have a maintenance line item for our existing collection that we have right now. So when you have works that need attention or repair or say something happens to something, the mural on the pool is a perfect example. It's in great shape. The plinths that hold the sculptures, the balayes sculptures in front of the HERC are not in good shape. You know, they're going to have to be replaced at some point. So we need the, if you do one point two-five, the two-five could go into a maintenance line item to secure funding.
I didn't have so much of a problem Kathleen was going to one point two-five, it's just why the difference, one point two-five on one category and two percent on the other.
Gary's got a point.
Gary can answer the URA.
The, the one percent for Arts Ordinance does not address the, the urban renewal area. The Urban Re- Urban Renewal Agency has adopted one percent as the council did. The one percent for urban renewal is on the increment generated. So it would come in, whatever increment it is, it'd be one percent of that. The one percent for Arts Ordinance that the council passed is only one percent of certain public projects which are constructed. Street maintenance projects for instance, underground utility projects are exempted from that. And the city frankly does not do that many projects. So at one percent, you're not going to get a lot of income. So it was just a way, and urban renewal areas typically try to incorporate more art components and make it more, especially the Legacy Crossing area, make it more livable and an inviting place. So it makes sense to, to at least present that proposal to the URA.
I understand that. I guess my question isn't clear. Why two percent for URA instead of one point two-five?
Your Honor.
Got one point two-five in one area and two percent in another area.
You can answer that Bill?
If I might, the, because you're talking about two very different numbers. If, if you are looking at large construction projects that are, that are multi-million dollar projects at the one and a quarter percent on the city side, that will generate a fairly large amount of money. When you're looking at one percent of the increment in Legacy Crossing, that's generating at about a little over a thousand dollars a year. And so in the seven years the district's been established, about forty-five hundred dollars has been put aside and allocated for public art projects. So it really was a larger number because it's a larger number of a much smaller, or a larger percentage of a much smaller number to try to generate some, some revenue that would help facilitate and accelerate public art installations within the district. And that's still up for the agency's consideration. This is just a recommendation, the agency will consider that in the future.
Walter?
Thank you Mayor. If I'm hearing a couple of the council members, I also, I had a problem with the increased funding three-point-one, three-point-two, three-point-three in this plan. Gary brought up one of the infrastructure plans we adopted several years ago, and I believe it was the water. And within that, it had a twenty to fifty-year plan for capital needs that they could project based upon projected increased population. You're probably going to need a new water tank here, a new well there, a new water main there. But it was framed, I believe, in terms of projections indicate these will-be needs. We separately did a rate increase plan Gary, which was not part of the master plan if my memory is correct. I have a problem having this rate increase as part of the master plan. I've got no problem with public art with a couple of particular, specific examples, but we won't go there. But I've got a little problem with just putting increased funding in this plan. A little different verbiage could help me maybe. Worked toward, suggested, something like that. But I've got, if I was hearing John correctly, a little concern about buying the apple and then having to eat it. I would be more comfortable with the plan excluding the rate increases and framing the twenty, no, the five, ten, whatever the year of the spreadsheet, however many year the plan goes out.
Goes through twenty, twenty-six.
In terms as a, a hoped-for, needed, desired, et cetera type item, I could, I could understand that and buy that. Those, those are my concerns regarding this. And, and just to finish, remember, the money that's generated from the city's one percent is put up by the city, not by the contractor. It comes out of our general fund. It doesn't go to streets, it goes to public art. So I'm not suggesting you don't do art, you do streets instead, but be aware, the money doesn't come out of thin air and the contractor doesn't donate it. He doesn't bring it to town when he drives in from Namples or somewhere. So it comes out of our general fund, so there's competing needs here that I think we should consider as a budget discussion as opposed to a public art master plan discussion.
Dan, you had a point on that.
Yeah, I was just thinking, the way Walter and John were talking about that, almost seems like the ten-year plan and, and the, of the capital improvement plan, instead of actually being, you know, part of the plan, the master plan, as being an appendix. So it's, you know, like, I think that that would make people feel more comfortable if, if it was there as, as an appendix saying, you know, here's, here's a proposal as far as what could happen in the next ten years, you know, this is our, this is our first shot at it. And that, that way, that could be the, you know, the first appendix to the deal and then with the others as far as, you know, this, this does say draft on it, so there could be some, a couple little changes in there. But that might, you know, I don't know if that works for, for how, how it was put together, but it seems to me like that might make it, make it more palatable.
Gary?
Well, and again, I certainly, redrafts can occur. I don't think the council is saying that they are supporting a point two-five percent increase of the public arts ordinance at this time. When you accept the plan, you're accepting the roadmap. And if the council has asked in the past, you want more specificity in these plans. You're getting specificity.
Oh absolutely.
Now, this is a plan. If you, it's like a strategic plan. The idea isn't that you're going to do everything in your strategic plan. Certainly there are things you'd like to do, but if you steer away from that goal, you need to either change the goal or you need to find a way to get back to your original goal. And that's what the plan is. So in this case, I don't think the council is binding itself to do anything in here. It's just as budget, as budget proposals are going to come to you, your arts department is going to be bringing forward proposals, budget proposals in conformance with this plan. Council will always have the choice of saying, okay, in Walter's case, we really need to get Third Street fixed, so, you know, rather than do this, this money has to go to that this year. Maybe next year they do something that's more arts-oriented. So those, those decisions are yours every budget cycle.
Well, the, the good thing about a plan is the fact that it gives you a roadmap for what things could look like a decade from now, without coming around every year and trying to have to pot-shot, this is what we'd like to do this year. And then the next year, it's, it's kind of like a hurry up and go sort of thing. This is more of a projected plan and a vision of what could be in ten or eleven years, which makes, to me, makes total sense. And of course, the council has discretion on what they want to do and where the money's going to go. They make the calls and the shots on that. But the Arts Commission coming forward with a plan like this, at least it gives the council something to look at and say, okay, this is kind of where they're going, maybe we can do some of this, maybe we can do some of it, depending on the typical year or what may be going on at that time. John, you had another point?
Well, yeah, I noticed here in three-point-two, in, establish within the city's annual, annual budget, a public art program appropriation starting at fifteen thousand. And to me, that means that we are going to make a minimal fifteen thousand dollar donation to the Art Commission and we've got a bunch of other commissions. And what do you think they're going to say? They're going to all come up and say, well, where's my fifteen thousand? And they're going to want their money too. And as far as Gary talking about the, we're not carved in stone. It seems like whenever we accept a plan, it just became the law. And getting any changes, like pulling hen's teeth. And, I mean, I would propose that we just take out three-one, three-two, and three-three and accept the rest of the plan.
Wayne?
I agree with John in some points, I disagree with him in some others, and that's kind of how you and I are a lot of times. You know, one of the things that happens when, when the art department, when it's time for some, for some, some public art someplace, is you have to put a steering committee together and you, and it's kind of, you research each individual one. That's why I like this plan, because it does give you some foresight down the road as to what your priorities really are, what, you've already looked at this, this is what you would like to do. And, and as long as the council, and, and I would remind the council, that when it comes budget time, we need to look at all these line items as to what's being proposed to us. And if, if, as Gary said, if there's a fifteen thousand dollar or say it was a twenty thousand dollar line item in there for, for public art, and we see some other areas that we really think that are a lot more important in the part of, of failing infrastructure, that it probably wouldn't happen that year.
If we were worried about failing infrastructure, we wouldn't even have an arts department. Mayor.
Walter, thank you. Direct your attention to page twenty-seven, section five-point-six, the Public Art Budget and Capital Improvement Plan. The first part of the first sentence of that says that it outlines a ten-year budget. Outlines a ten-year budget. As you go on down into that paragraph, it is a suggested public art type, meaning we've outlined a budget, but we want to discuss about exactly which types we're going to really do within this plan. And then it talks about first priority project is recommended, which means we can talk about whether or not that's the first project or not. But the budget is a very definitive statement of outlines a ten-year budget. I'm going back to the fact that I'd be a lot happier if there was a little bit of wiggle room in some of this verbiage about budgeting and funding and percentages that talks in terms of suggested, proposed, or something. And in that vein, I'd be a lot happier with it as a master plan. It, I think John's got a point. Some of these things, it takes overt action by the council to unwind plans sometimes. Things get said, I've had this argument over the water plan that Gary brought up, his public works, when they explained to me that a one-million gallon water tank is set in stone in the water plan. And I said, not till the council votes the money for it, it's not, even though it's in the master plan. But then they jump ahead to the fact that it's in the plan, we've got a rate structure that'll pay for it, therefore it's going to happen.
Art. I look at this as an aspirational document, much like Moscow's Comprehensive Plan that lays out a roadmap and a direction that we would like to move in. Clearly, we aren't going to be able to address every single item in either one of those two documents, as Wayne points out. And when it comes to the actual budget, there's nothing in this that I see that binds the council to providing any provision. This is just a very specific set of suggestions that would aspirationally be a way that the Arts Commission would like to proceed if the economic climate is beneficial. So for me, I don't mind it because I don't feel particularly bound to put it into stone into the budget necessarily. To me, it's like the Comprehensive Plan, it's kind of like, this is the way we would like to go. Here are some very specific projects along the way that we'd like to see happen. Does it mean they're going to happen? No. Does it mean we'd like them to? Yes. So I have less problem with the way it's written than my colleagues at either end of the dais here.
Yeah.
You know what, I'll put our feet to the fire here, I'll make a motion that we accept the plan. And with Art, I don't think that we're, you know, we're going to live or die by it, but it's a good, it's a good roadmap for the, for the future, whether, whether it starts in fiscal year seventeen or fiscal year nineteen, you know, and it just might move that ten years down the road as far as it goes, or it might make it a twenty-year project, see how things play out. But I just move that we accept the plan.
I would agree with Dan and I would second that.
Okay, we got a motion by Dan, the second by Art, to accept the plan. Walter?
Thank you Mayor. Art, of, of all people, for the years you spent on PNC, I can only imagine how many people stood at that podium and beat you over the head with the fact that something was or was not in a comp plan. You, I heard what you said and I'm not going to sit here and debate it with you, but I personally- have heard, not even going to PNC meetings, people say, you can't do this, it's not in the comp plan, or you have to do it, it's in the comp plan. And then the PNC has to sit there and wrestle with the fact, well, yeah, but we really don't want to do it, and so forth. So I think there's hazard in doing this that contains some elements that appear to me to set a roadmap. I think this, if passed, will give Kathleen, a department head, a lot of weight when she goes and meets with administrative staff setting the budget, and can point to this document and say, well, the council approved it with these percentages in it, Gary, and I think that's what ought to be in my budget for next year. Now, Gary may win the argument, I don't care what they did, it ain't going to happen, but it provides a situation, it sets up a situation, and I'm just, that's what I've got a problem with. I don't want to vote against this, but I'm going to if it stays like it is.
Mayor?
I'd like to propose an amendment to the motion. And that would be, that 3.2 would be stricken from it, and it would be accepted without that $15,000 amount in there.
I would second that.
Okay, we got an amendment to the motion to remove item 3.2 restricted from the document. Second by John.
Now, if I remember this right, we vote on the amendment, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Start with Walter.
Well, a comment first, if I may, Mr. Mayor. I like 3.2. I think it's a good idea, but not in the master plan. Wayne, not in the master plan. I would love it as a suggested, we need it. We think that in order to maintain the seed, the fire hose, land art, you know, the other items, we need to set up, find some way to budget 15 grand a year for maintenance. I like that concept and idea. I just don't like it in this. That's my problem. So I'm going to vote against that motion.
Your Honor, I understand there's an amendment on the table. I'd like to suggest, if you're, if, what I'm hearing is you like the concept, you don't like the hard numbers. So you could, if you wanted to, insert language in 3.1 that says, that states essentially, consider increasing the public art ordinance contribution from 1% to provide additional funding. That gives you all the opportunity. Kathleen will come in with her suggested budget, you haven't bound yourselves. And on 3.2, consider establishing within the city's annual budget, a public art program appropriation to provide a consistent and reliable funding source. With those two, addition of those two words, what you're saying is, and deletion of the numbers, allows you to consider that, but does not bind you to any particular course of action. And that would be, I understand you have an amendment and a main motion, but that may take care of the competing concerns that I hear.
Well, if Wayne were to withdraw his motion and change it?
No, because I don't have a problem going to 1.25. I just have a problem with $15,000. And I think that's where the problem's going to be on passing this. I think if we strike that, I think we can get it passed.
Well, we got a motion, and we got a second.
Let's fight out.
Yeah, we'll start with you, John.
Baiting this?
No, well, no, because a motion's been made.
Jim can talk about it if he wishes.
This is the vote on the amendment.
This is on the amendment, that's correct, that's what we're talking about. Everybody understands that, Rod. I think we're clear on that.
I see all of these funding things in here as suggestions that the commission has come up with as possibilities for a funding source. I don't see them as things that they say what, that they're trying to bind us with. I think they're ideas that we should consider. And so I don't feel bound by them at all. The 1.25, if there's no city projects, then you don't even get the 1, let alone the 1.25. So that's not, that might not ever happen. And we certainly, in every budget, will have to decide on whether we're going to allocate $15,000 or not. That's a number they came up with as a possible funding source. They might also have grants that they might get from the federal government, or any place else could be suggested.
This doesn't even address grants.
Right, it doesn't.
It doesn't address it.
They're bringing up these as possible funding sources, but I don't think that plan in any way binds the council to funding them. So I'm not opposed to it, as far as receiving the document is, here's a plan, yeah, we've seen it, may not agree with everything in it, but it's there, it's well-done, it's something for us to consider when we establish a budget. That's how I view it.
Wayne?
Mayor, call for the question.
Call for the question, which means we vote, and this is on the amendment to strike 3.2. We'll start with John.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
No.
No.
Aye.
Ooh, interesting.
Guess what?
I will say no.
Okay. Now, we vote on the motion.
Yep, we vote on the motion, so 3.2 stays in. The motion is to, it was made by Dan, and seconded by Art, to accept the master plan as it is written. And then we'll start with Walter.
No.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay, so we've got a four to two, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, so it is accepted as is, four to two.
Do I get to make a comment?
Sure.
Sure.
Well, I want to thank you. And, you know, I've been a resident of Lethal County for about 35 years, but I now work in Whitman County, and the communities, and in economic development, and the communities over there would kill to have the kind of rich art culture that we have in this community. So I think you can be really proud of the vote that you made tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, for all your work. Okay, we will move on, folks, to item number A, which is an agreement service with the Moscow Urban Renewal Agency. Gary, read you, you have the podium, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor. As we're talking about the arts as an engine of economic development, I'm here to propose a little bit of a different engine. We have, as you know, an agreement with the Moscow Urban Renewal Agency. Our current agreement is such that the Urban Renewal Agency pays $30,000 to the city of Moscow for services relating to the administration of the agency. That would be city clerk, finance department, various and sundry other city services that are provided to the URA, some engineering, some community development, so on and so forth. In addition to that, several years ago, about 2008, council developed a proposal to hire a half-time economic development specialist, and if the URA would split that time and fund a half-time executive director for the URA. The position was combined back in 2008. Travis Carey was the first, our first economic development specialist/executive director. Travis was here a little over a year. I filled the role for about eight or nine months after that. Jeff Jones then followed and was here for a little over three years. That position, we advertised for it, Jeff left in May of 2014. We advertised, interviewed, unable to retain a successful candidate. Since that time, I have been doing the interim work along with some help from additional staff. In the period of time that we've been doing this, we've had some things that are occurring with the URA at this point. The Alturas Urban Renewal Area and Tax Allocation Area will end this year, and so it will go away, leaving the URA with one urban renewal area, the Legacy Crossing area that it's working on. As Bill indicated in the last session, that Legacy Crossing is not generating a lot of increment right now, although we have high hopes. At any rate, the workload has decreased somewhat, and when Alturas goes offline, it'll decrease a little more, while work is continuing to go forward on Legacy Crossing. And it is hopeful at some point that we look at a third urban renewal area, perhaps in the southeast Moscow industrial park area after Alturas closes. However, that may be some time down the road. In the past four or five months, I've approached Bill Belknap, we've looked at, was it possible for him to assume the duties of the executive director of the Urban Renewal Agency? Bill's done a little bit of restructuring in his department. Al Gray, you've seen, has been present at a few more meetings. Becky Couch, of course, is shouldering her part of the burden as well. Bill has a little more time to spend on things such as development, and he's indicated that he would like to assume those duties if it's possible. I've looked over, from an administrative standpoint, what can be done. A lot of the things that the Urban Renewal Agency done, does, is Bill's involved in anyway, as our community development director. He's often one of the first people that businesses stop and talk to, developers talk to, as to what could be allowed. If someone comes to town, they're looking for something, they'll stop in at community development. And certainly, when anybody ever approached me in my interim role as executive director, I would send them, Bill would come over, and we'd have a discussion about it. So he was always involved, anyway. At any rate, the point is, at this point, we believe that we can absorb those duties, for the most part, within Bill's role, sharing his community development director. I will continue in this proposal, supervising that position, as well as continuing to fill the legislative liaison role for the URA. And up until this point, as I indicated, the salary of the half-time positions, half was paid by the city, half was paid by the URA, in addition to the $30,000 of administrative services. Last year, it came out to just around $81,000 to the URA. We believe that an additional $15,000 above and beyond the $30,000 that the original contract calls for will compensate for the additional work that's going to be done. At this point, we will not be refilling, in this next budget, we won't be proposing refilling the half-time economic developments specialist, as I've indicated to council leadership and the mayor, that we're exploring a cooperative, similar to the former LEDC-type regional economic development, and we'll be proposing that in the FY 2016 budget. So with that, the agreement that you have before you was presented to both the Urban Renewal Agency Board last Wednesday, as well as Administrative Committee on Monday, last Tuesday, excuse me. And it's changed a little bit. That proposal, or that agreement, merely rolled the duties of the executive director into the base services to be provided to the URA by the city. One of the questions at the Administrative Committee was, how long was the agreement? It was described as an annual agreement. Actually, it was an agreement that continued from year to year, subject to a 60-day termination provision. As I indicated, at that point, we would review that, we would also take a look at whether there needed to be an inflationary escalator in the contract, as typically you have in service contracts. We have many service contracts that we, as a city, enter into that have that escalator in it. So the proposal that you have before you has a five-year period term of the agreement. Again, it's still subject to the 60-day termination, so if either party wants out, give 60 days notice. If the services provided to the URA increase substantially, then we will reopen negotiations with the URA, as we indicated to the Administrative Committee, as well as the URA Board. So what we would like to do at this point is go forward, oh, and there is a 3% escalation provision, which is typical of our contracts, that gives some stability to the contract in a year where your CPI is 2.1, then it may be a little heavy, but in the years when your inflationary factor is 4.5, it lends itself to the other way as well. So with that, we would propose that council allow this to move forward, that it would take effect on October 1st of 2015, and that it would define the relationship between the city and the URA going forward.
Dan, Administrative Committee heard this on May 26th.
Yes, we did, and as Gary said, those changes were made. We talked about it being an annual agreement, and that was, there was a little bit of, that was kind of a misnomer, as Gary pointed out there. It was more of just kind of a rolling, rolling agreement, you know, that we basically annually said, okay, we'll do it again. Didn't really, not really set as that, but seeing it as a five-year agreement with the 60-day option there, I think, and adding the escalator in there. Number one, it, I think it ends up being, you know, a little bit cheaper in both ways. Basically, we're not paying the, that 50% of that salary, and I think it's a little bit less expensive for the URA as well, even though they're, because they're not paying 50% of the salary, but even though they're paying more for the administrative services. So I think it's a good agreement, you know, and if anybody had any comments, that's why we brought it to full council, to let folks comment on it.
Art's got, yeah.
Just a question.
I will get him, Walter. Recognize Art first. You had a comment, too, John?
Well, my only comment is, I think we have to keep in mind that the agreement they're working under now
Can you do that again, Walter?
Is $30,000 for administrative services. That is separate from the $30,000 that we are paying Jeff Jones.
Yeah, with, it wasn't just $30,000, John, it was half of the expenses, so it was half of the benefits, it was half of education, travel, that stuff.
And if you were to take his $30,000 and half of the expenses of having him as an employee, and add to it the $30,000 that we were paying for the administrative work, that's where you came up with the 81.
Exactly.
It's not clear in here.
Sorry.
But that's where we came up with the 81, and we are now going to go from 81 back to 45.
Yes, sir.
Art? I heard a conjunction. So, just a procedural thing, seeing as we're considering an amended draft here, does it have to go back to the URA for approval with the changes?
Yes, it'll, and I informed the board of that, that we'd be bringing it forward. We talked, as you recall from the URA Board, that there'd probably be some sort of escalation provision put in it. City attorney's suggestion to have a term on it, I agree with that, as long as that 60-day provision is in there, protecting both parties. So, yeah, it would come back next Wednesday to the board.
So it was the URA, and then does it have to come back here? We good at that point, unless they have changes?
If the council tonight says, yes, we're fine in executing it, it'll be offered to the URA. If the URA says it's fine as written, all we need to do is execute it.
Cool. Walter?
Dan made a comment, thank you, Mayor. Dan made a comment, I think what you said was, it's a five-year agreement, but it's not. Section 6, page 4, says it is for a term of five years, and at the end of the term, the agreement will continue year to year until terminated. To me, that's a rolling agreement. I would prefer, there was some confusion in my mind, reading it and watching the Administrative Committee, comment was made, it was a one-year agreement, I said, I can't find that in it. I think that may have been part of what instigated trying to get some timeframe in here. I would contend that five years and then rolling one year after that is a rolling agreement. It does have a 60-day notice termination ability in it, but I would prefer to see it probably as just a term of five years. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we accept the agreement, but that section 6 be changed to read that this agreement for services is for a term of five years, period, and then during the term and so forth is in the remainder of that paragraph.
Staff has no objection to that.
I'll second that. Okay, Walter made a motion.
I'll second.
Dan seconded it.
Oh, Dan, Dan, I'm sorry.
To just limit section 6 to a five-year agreement.
Does that also include the 60 days' notice?
Yes, the remainder of the paragraph remains the same.
So in essence, at the end of five years, it would have to be
Have to come back.
Have to come back for reapproval.
Come for council.
And that's fine.
Okay, John, everybody understand it? Okay, we'll start with you, John.
Aye.
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 And I.
Okay, so that contract is accepted with that change on section 6. Okay, that will go to committee reports. Dan, I'll start with you.
Well, we had the only committee meeting last week, and pretty much everything made it to council this week, so the only other thing is I had a couple meetings in between on the 20th. One of our more interesting things was a regional mutual aid fire meeting that Deputy Chief Joe Williams puts together, and, you know, we met with our partners in the local area, even across the border in Pullman and Whitman County, and basically talked about the upcoming fire season and what we expect, and what kind of help we can expect from everybody. So it was kind of good to get everybody together. On the 28th, the Parks and Rec Commission On the 28th, the Parks and Rec Commission, the big discussion in that meeting was dogs at the Mountain View Park. There's been some issues out there with some issue left by dogs in the off-leash area and in the area that is not part of the off-leash area. So the commission is going to do some homework and do some studying and check things out. It basically came about that, you know, they've got concerns basically in parks across town, not only with dogs being off-leash, but the dogs, what they're leaving in the parks and what, well, actually what their owners are leaving there and not cleaning up. Dwight even had a, you know, a firsthand
Example?
Experience, you know, where he, a guy let his dog out and do its duty, and the guy wasn't picking up, and Dwight said, hey, you realize, number one, you're not in the off-leash area, and number two, you got to clean up after your dog. They got into it a little bit, but Dwight convinced him that maybe he ought to be picking up after his dog. You know, I don't think Dwight uttered any expletives, but he heard plenty.
I heard you had to stand up.
Not at that meeting. Oh, there were a few people that did. I spoke loud enough there, so I didn't have to. But we may be seeing that, revisiting that here at council here in the near future. So, you know, and I remember when we told them, you know, we'd keep on it, or it may get ruined for everybody, so.
So that's not really working out as well as they don't.
Hell, evidently not. I mean, the people that are there, that showed up at the meeting, they're not the problem. And we made sure to tell them that that's not the case, but the problem people are, just like anything else, they ruin it for everybody else.
Yep, exactly.
And that's all I got.
Art? I'm going to be very brief. I didn't have any liaison meetings, and we discussed the URA already.
Okay. Walter?
Thank you, Mayor. On May the 21st, I attended the Police Basin Aquifer Committee. There was a report on the progress on hiring a consultant to pull together all the available data, including that from City of Pullman, City of Moscow, regarding water supply alternatives. You remember, we had a study that's still ongoing regarding trying to capture water up on Moscow Mountain. Part of that came up, that looking at the rivers was another viable alternative. So what PBAC wants to do is to get not just those alternatives, but any other they can find in the data in a single document to put in full PBAC for consideration. There was a report from Pullman on their toilet rebate program, what they've done over the last five years with that in terms of quantities and dollars involved. I'm looking forward to when we get the Moscow Water Conservation Plan before this body, to see what's in there regarding a toilet rebate program and to look into whether or not that's a viable program that we would like to go with. On May the 27th, I attended the Campus Community Coalition, which is looking at reducing the risk related to alcohol and other drugs. I refer to it as a drug or alcohol-drug task force, but it is an outgrowth of that original task force. And one of the main items that we had there was listening to Charlie Gurkey from the Moscow School District explain survey data that they have done over the past quite a few years regarding their children's, their students' perceptions and attitudes and activities regarding drugs and alcohol. It was quite interesting information. There's, of course, a little bit of a problem sometimes comparing it year to year with the surveys changing sometimes a little bit, finding out exactly what it means, but it was quite enlightening. We then moved into looking at a scanning process to attempt to identify exactly which problems we feel we need to concentrate on. Just because they have them elsewhere doesn't mean we have them here. We may have some that other places don't have as much as we do. So that will be an ongoing process. The police departments represented, the school districts represented, the county. A lot of good representation on that, a lot of good opinions and perspectives. So those are my only two meetings the past two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Wayne?
Well, we didn't have a Public Works and Finance meeting because Dan took care of it on the Advent, so we had that day off. But I did have a meeting on May 19th, the Smart Transit. For everybody to know, Carl Root is going to be retiring from U of I Parking Services after many years there.
He did that on Friday.
Yeah, I guess that was right. And Daniel Ewerd was voted in onto the Smart Transit Board as a representative from University of Idaho. He'll actually be taking Ron Smith's position on the board, although Dan's official U of I title is different than what Ron's was, and I won't try to guess what that is. You might know, big Gary, but.
Yeah, he's in charge of facilities and
Finances and
Facilities, risk management, there's a bunch of
At any rate.
And Ron Smith is continuing on the Smart
Ron will be continuing on as an at-large member, and his contributions are always very valued. And then, speaking of arts, Smart Transit, once again, will be active with the Art Walk, possibly by providing a venue for the reading of poetry and displaying of artwork at the Intermodal Transportation Center. And on the 21st, I was in Lewiston at a Clearwater Economic Development Association Operations and Finance Committee meeting, and their financial picture is looking a little bit better this year with the economics turning around, economy doing a little bit better. They're looking pretty good. And then one interesting thing that happened was, City of Potlatch had some property that they wanted to divest themselves of, and there was some consideration as to whether Seda should just buy it. And then there was some concerns about the legalities of doing that, and so Mayor Dave Brown of Potlatch said, you know what, let's just forget about that, and I'll put it out for auction. Well, it's sold. And there will be a small company at this point in time, not going to mention who it is, but there'll be a small company locating there. And even though it's in Potlatch, the spin-off is still good for Moscow, as they create jobs, good for Latalk County. And let's see, on the 28th, Historical Preservation Commission met, that was last Thursday, and members of the Historical Preservation Commission toured the University of Idaho. It maybe seemed a little strange because they all seem to be part of it anyway, but they actually took a tour to look at some of the historical values and historical buildings of the University of Idaho, and possibly creating its own historical preservation district, as well as including this area in this year's edition of the Preservation Moscow Newsletter. There will be an open house on June 17th for a public discussion of the proposed Russell Historic Preservation District and the inclusion of some of the different homes in there that had not been in it in the past. And then they did choose the winners of this year's Orchid Awards. They were picked, they will be announced at the McConnell Mansion Ice Cream Social. I know who they are. I probably could be bought after the meeting, but we'll see. That's all I have.
Jim?
On May 28th, the Clearwater Resource Conservation and Development Council met in Lewiston, and the crux of what happened there, Renee Hill, the new executive director, is getting her feet on the ground and working really hard to simplify the insurance situation so new projects that come into the council will know where they stand in terms of what insurance they need for their employees and for liability problems. The Clearwater Basin Youth Conservation Corps is getting underway. They, I think they had their first meeting orientation thing for the kids that are going to be working on the Conservation Corps this summer last Saturday. Tara King of Northwest Management's in charge of that. That's a project that could work for the city of Moscow in terms of weed control and park maintenance or whatever, we can hire those. So Dwight Curtis should probably be aware of that.
We will make him so aware.
That would be great. And that was kind of the crux of that meeting. That's all I have.
Okay, John?
Gary took care of the urban renewal issues. Canton took care of the human rights. I'm glad you sit next to me, because I need that. And the planning and zoning, didn't have a quorum, so they didn't meet.
What have you been doing?
I don't do anything except sit there, Wayne.
That's what else is involved. You're like, that's a leadership issue with mills, huh?
Okay, John, you're done. On the 27th, we had an airport board meeting, and in that airport board meeting, we had some representatives from Alaska Air Down talking about scheduled changes this fall for flights for the Pullman Moscow Airport. And one of the biggest changes is to have an 11 o'clock flight from Seattle. That flight will be at 7:20, so that will be kind of a nice change. It'll be getting in a little earlier. Still the three flights, but instead of having that real late one, it's being moved up.
Instead of 11:00 in the morning, it'll be
No, at night.
Oh, at night.
It comes in at 11:00 o'clock at night or 11:30, whatever that, and they're discontinuing that one, and it will be a 7, like around 7:20. So that's going to take place in September. So does that mean that if we're on a late flight from the east coast, we're stuck in Seattle overnight?
You could spend the night in Seattle.
If you choose the wrong carrier, probably. So there you have it. Either you leave DC like at 2:00 in the morning, they're timed to get there in time. We spoke, somebody spoke about Dan Ewerd from the university being on the transit board. He's also going to be on the airport board, so he'll be there, and he will be replacing Ron Smith on that board.
Good guy. Good addition to it.
Yep, Dan will be there. Tomorrow, just as a reminder, we have an informal meeting with the county commissioners in this very room on area city of impact, and it's going to be pretty informal, but it'll be a nice gathering, get-together for all of us.
11:30?
Yes, 11:30. And then on the 3rd, we have another meeting at Walls Complex at 7:00 a.m. with city, county, as well as university officials for breakfast there, so for you guys, just f-.
I got a notice that was canceled.
Is it? It's on my calendar.
I didn't receive a cancellation. I was just
You sent it.
Can't change your venue, I thought.
Really?
You sent it. Sorry.
It is on.
It's on my calendar.
It cannot lie.
Where did that come from, man?
I'm sorry.
That's where I sent you the email.
Okay. I sent you one back asking, who sent it?
Okay.
No, it is still on.
Change of location.
Is it on in the same place?
Wall Complex.
I believe so. I'll have Lori send out
Horizon's room at the Commons is what it came out as.
Would you, Gary, would you
I'll have Lori send something out.
Reissue it tomorrow so everybody here
I know during the summertime, they want us to have a more accurate head count.
Well, it was funny, because it came out, it says, canceled monthly meeting, then in the swallow, there's a change of location for June, but it still came out as a canceled meeting.
I will have Lori send something out tomorrow.
We sent it out to everybody, so we got that, and
Walls Complex is close.
I'm glad I brought that up, so we could talk about that, because
Those of us who show it up
We're at the wrong spot.
With that, Gary, I'm done. Have you got anything you want to add?
I just wanted to remind everyone, Art Walk on the 12th, Friday night, the 12th. It's going to be a great time, a lot of neat stuff. And we now have a date for our quarterly regional breakfast meeting in July. That is the city of Moscow's turn to host that. It'll be at the University in Best Western. The topic will be our Pullman Moscow Regional Airport. As the mayor just indicated, they had an airport board meeting last Wednesday, the finance end of it, we met at 10:00 o'clock earlier that day, talking about that work's being done. There will be a grant that we will be awarded, and that means match. So we've got things that are happening and felt that because it is truly of regional significance, that it would be a good time to come in. We've got Tony Bean and Scott, can't remember Scott's last name.
From Huntley?
Yes, the co-chair or co-manager of the project. And Mayor Lambert and Mayor Johnson will also have comments, so it'll be a fun time. 7:00 o'clock in the morning, May 15th, at the University in Best Western.
You still got a notice on that.
Yes, Lori do it. I'll make sure it goes out.
Everybody's done. I'd entertain a motion adjourned.
Consider yourself entertained.
Fall and February, aye. I oppose. We're adjourned at 9:04, folks. Thank you.